All right. We are ready to call this special, special meeting of the Alamo County School Board to order. We will have, first have a motion to certify the closed session by Ms. Carlson. So Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, are considered in the closed meeting.
Second. It has been moved by Mrs. Carlson, second by Mrs., by Mr. Oberg, that we certify that nothing was discussed in that meeting except for what we had put into the motion to go into closed meeting. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Mrs. Johnson, will you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so we also have one motion that will be coming out of the closed session. So Ms. Lee, will you please make that motion for us?
Yes, sir. I move that the Alamo County School Board appoint Ms. Cassandra Blunt as principal of Burley Middle School.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Lee, second by Dr. Acuff, that we appoint Mrs. Cassandra Blunt as principal at Jackson P. Burley Middle School. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mrs. Johnson, roll call, please.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. This meeting, being a special meeting, we would have to read these notes, or this note, rather, into the minutes. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically, personally onto Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public School website. During this special meeting, we do not have public comment, but public comments can be sent to us, or rather, emails can be sent to us through the county's website, the school division's website. All right, thank you. All right, so since this is being streamed and some people may not have video, we'll take a quick mic check. So starting with Dr. Acuff.
Kaye Deka, Jack Jewett, just.
Okay, as I see him on the screen, Mrs. Lee.
Judy Lee, Ravanna District.
Right, Ms. Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Wyomond, Estadio District.
Mrs. Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Ms. Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryod District.
And Ms. Alcaro.
John O. Alcaro, at large.
Okay, I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And so we are now ready to move into our special meeting business. First item on our agenda, the Baker Butler Dominion Power easement.
Good afternoon, I'm Rosalind Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. This is hopefully a short item. We are in the process of installing mobile classrooms at Baker Butler, and we need to get power to them, which requires easement to Dominion on our property. That easement is attached in the agenda item.
Could we have a motion on the easement for Baker Butler's Dominion Power?
This is on for action?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Baker Butler utility easement as proposed by Ms. Schmidt.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Carlson, that we accept the Dominion Power easement as shown in our business packet and also as outlined by Mrs. Schmidt. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mrs. Johnston.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro? Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. And in my haste to sort of open, I overlooked that we also have our student representative, Malani Burkhard, present during the meeting again today. So Malani, if you'd just like to say hello to the board and to the public. Okay, thank you, and sorry I overlooked you in the beginning. Moving to our next item, the opening plan for 2020, '21, presented to us by staff.
So, thank you, Mr. Page. I'm going to be turning things over to staff to make that presentation. I want to thank everyone in our community, in our, in our schools and the community at large for your patience as we have worked our way through this process to make the best decision that we can make with all the information that we could, we could gather. I want to thank the cabinet for your, for your excellent work that you've done and your ability to take lots of feedback, plenty of information, all the information available, and translate that into planning. I want to thank the school board for your patience and input and all the thoughts and questions that you've provided us to chew on and get better and keep making improvements. I really think that you've added a tremendous amount of value to this process for our staff. I want to thank all of our teachers, our support staff, all of our employees for all the ways that you've provided input in the process, ranging from responding to surveys, to writing letters, to writing emails, and to sitting in on meetings with your principals and also with division staff to give us feedback and to start making plans for providing high-quality teaching and learning for your students. And thank everyone for all of the input that we've received, emails, feedback, and surveys. And I think the board did, did the community a great service in hosting three town hall meetings last week to receiving input and have questions asked during those sessions. I learned a great deal during those sessions, and I'm really grateful to our board members for hosting them. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Rosalind Schmidt to lay out the plan.
Good afternoon, I'm Rosalind Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. We appreciate the opportunity to provide a return to school planning update. This afternoon, we're calling it the stages of returning. I'm going to start off as a reminder of our key milestones with the board these last two months. We began with the guidance document. You made a decision to postpone the start date. And then on July 9th, we presented scheduled scenarios for hybrid learning. Those scenarios maximize in-person instruction with the, under the social distancing constraints of buildings and buses. And so this afternoon will be about deciding the opening plan. As we shared at the last meeting, the state has issued phased guidance for schools. This guidance is intended to be the ceiling, not the floor. The scenarios on the ninth aligned with the phase three of these, of this guidance. And this afternoon, we will share stages and options that more align with phase one and two of this document. While the state is currently in phase three, it is strongly worded that the final decision is in the hands of the local school board. The board must take into account your local health conditions and your community concerns. So the purpose, the purpose of today is that Dr. Haas will make a recommendation to the board, and then the board will select a starting stage for Alamo County Public Schools, what we're recommending for the first nine weeks. Again, this is the start of our school year. To achieve that purpose, we're going to start by reviewing feedback that we've received since the last meeting. We'll go over what we're calling the stages of returning. Dr. Haas will present his recommendation, and then we, as staff, will step back, allow you to discuss and decide your action, and then we'll wrap up with next steps. So first, feedback, I'm going to start off with feedback. We'll review in detail the staff survey and parent intent forms, but I also wanted to highlight the other avenues that we've received feedback in the last several weeks. Dr. Haas has hosted employee and family forums, excuse me, with randomly selected individuals. As he mentioned, the school board, you have hosted three town halls. Staff has met with a teacher feedback group and leadership groups. And as we're all aware, we've seen many, many, received and read many, many emails. So Dr. Kaiser will go over our staff survey.
Good afternoon, I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. And what, what you see before you today is, are the results of a survey that was put out to our staff. The survey ran from July 10th through July 22nd. And as you can see, we had 1,262 respondents. That is out of our total of about 2,700 employees. The, the responses included 871 teachers or licensed staff, with the rest being our classified staff. As you can see from the results here, when you look at their comfort with returning for face-to-face instruction, the, there is considerable concern. About 65% of our, of our employees are saying that they do not feel comfortable at this time returning to school, face-to-face, that is. When we break it down into the different aspects that may be on their mind that are worrying them, you'll see that there are a number of things that, if you look at the weighted scores, they're, they're very, very similar, but we have a number of employees that are somewhat or very concerned regarding physical distancing, addressing illness at the school, getting sick themselves, exposing their family, leave options, what our protective protocols will be, and also our cleaning protocols. And just for other information for you to have at this time, at this moment, Human Resources has received requests for telework or virtual teaching from 51 of our staff members. One of the things that we know is the CDC has identified certain high-risk groups that we, that we have found that the people who are requesting these, many of them fall into those categories. We also are hearing from people who have concerns for family members that they live with or care, that they're caretakers for, that may have high risks themselves. And also, we have people who have made these requests who are just generally fearful for or concerned about coming back to face-to-face instruction. At this time, we have had leave of absence requests for the full year for 10 of our teachers and five of our classified staff. That's somewhat on par with last year where we had a total of 15 leave of absences for the entire year. And at this moment in time, we have six teachers who have not yet signed their contract and have specifically indicated that that is due to their concerns around COVID and are awaiting the school board's decision for how we start our instruction to make their determination. One of the things that we do know is that these numbers will shift as we, as the board makes decisions about the in-person instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. That reviews our staff data. We want, in addition to the staff survey, we've collected key data from our families, key data including their learning preferences, hybrid versus virtual, if buildings were to open on September 8th, their transportation needs, and what their internet access is. I think it's important to note that regardless of the outcome today, we will continue to gather this data from our families. It's important for planning purposes. And we just encourage families to remain in contact with their school to update responses as more information is provided over the next several weeks or their personal circumstances change. So this afternoon, I just want to highlight two questions from that form. The first is the amount or the current level of concern. And so we had over almost 6,000 responses to this question as of today. And as you can see with the weighted score of 3.44, it indicates responses are primarily between somewhat and moderately concerned, with almost a third being extremely concerned. And if you recall, these forms were sent out one per student, so a household with, with three children had three different forms to fill out. The second question we want to highlight is the preference of hybrid versus virtual learning. At this point in time, 2,286 of our families have selected a virtual learning option for their child. So yeah, that's 226 students, that's not our families. When this, a survey, a similar survey a month ago, that was only about 1,000. So I'll hand this over now to Ms. Collins to go over the stages of returning.
Good afternoon, I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent for Student Learning. We are presenting a staged approach to returning to school. These stages were developed after listening to feedback from our stakeholders. There are three key points to consider as we move through our presentation. These stages presented are a sequenced approach from fully virtual instruction to fully in-person instruction. Public health will be the guide for the decisions that the board now, Alamo County Public Schools makes on how and when students will learn. And ACPS will need to be fluid in their response to the community depending on public health. Before we discuss the stages, we want to emphasize that we will always be looking at for our healthy, to our healthy environments. In all stages, all employees will have physical access to the learning space and equipment and resources. Health mitigation strategies will be in place for all students and employees who would enter the building. And more information on those strategies can be found on the website under return to school. We have developed five stages. You can see from this slide that there is complexity to each stage and the progression from one stage to another. Within the stages are strands, a virtual strand, an access strand, a hybrid learning strand. As you move from left to right, student numbers shift for all students, being it a virtual environment experience to most students being in an in-person experience. We'd like to offer three definitions that we will believe in, that we believe will assist in unpacking and understanding these stages. Virtual learning. Virtual learning is a learning experience that is enhanced through the utilization of computers and the internet. The instruction most commonly takes place in an online environment and can be synchronous or asynchronous. In-person access. We define that as students will be invited into the building so they can do their virtual learning in the building. These students will be arranged in small pod groups of 10 or fewer. Pods will be provided a learning coach who will assist with the virtual experience as prescribed by the student's teachers. Transportation would be provided. Hybrid learning. Hybrid learning is a learning experience that is a combination of in-person instruction and virtual learning. And again, in this model, transportation will be provided. Stage one. All students will learn virtually. Stage two. A key feature of stage two is to provide access to three groups of students. We have identified these students as likely to have extreme difficulty accessing the curriculum through virtual learning. Alamo County Public Schools will offer optional in-person access to buildings to a limited number of students, including students without internet access or limited access we cannot improve. Students with special needs who cannot access the curriculum virtually as determined by their IEP. And English learners in grades four through 12 with WEATA levels one and two. Dr. Diggs will give you more information on our students with limited or no internet access.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Good afternoon, I'm Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer. And I am pleased to be here to share our plans for helping as many students as possible get connected to the internet. It's important to know that for virtual synchronous instruction, having an internet connection capable of streaming video and audio for a sustained period of time is essential. We know how many students we have with no internet. And the parent intent forms will let us know which students we have, have limited access and which students have limited access that we are unable to improve. The Department of Technology will support our schools working with their students and families on a case-by-case basis to determine the connectivity solution each student needs based on their location or financial need. There are three possible scenarios for students without internet access that are shown here on the slide. Based on the scenario for the student, we can provide these following solutions. For no internet or access that we are unable to improve, the family will have the option to choose between students coming into their school for the virtual alert, for to do their virtual learning work, provided we are at that phase where they can be in the building or receiving paper packets and flash drives. For students who can utilize a hotspot successfully for their connection, we'll provide one or more, if needed, with an unlimited data plan, which is critical for streaming video. And then for students who can, who do not currently have internet access due to financial situations and to reside in the service area and qualify according to Comcast's criteria, our schools will assist those families in applying for Comcast's Internet Essentials program for broadband connectivity, and we will pay for it. Thank you.
Mr. Kirsch will give you more details about our special needs students.
Hello, I'm Kevin Kirsch, your Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services. And I'd like to provide some clarity with regard to exactly how we're going to handle in stage two, students with special needs. It's important by default to recognize that in stage two, students with disabilities that have IEPs or Section 504 planes, the regular ed, the general ed environment would be redefined as virtual. So that's the default. So when there's questions, just in general, what are we going to do with students with disabilities? It's what we're going to do with their general ed peers. And that is, we're redefining in stage two, the regular ed environment. We plan to implement IEPs that were written in the spring of 2020. Of course, it'll be reviewed for any exceptions that absolutely cannot be implemented, but for the most part, it's expected that those would be implemented. Only for students with disabilities who could not receive any meaningful educational benefit in the virtual environment would the invitation through the IEP process be proposed to include, include in-person learning in stage two. Specifically, we are talking about students with the most intensive needs. And just by the years of our work together, we've really developed programs and models that can help us identify those students. And they are noted here, that is primarily students that are being taught with the aligned standards of learning in program models that we refer to as C-based, functional skills, community-based instruction, or post-high programs. The only addition to that would be our A-based programs that use evidence-based practices for students that exhibit characteristics of, although are not necessarily diagnosed with autism. So again, this in-person access would be offered, but the family has the option to choose virtual, should they do so. And right now, honestly, not having a solid number, we're estimating 100 students, but that's, that's our best estimate at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Ms. Castner will share information about our English learners with significant language barriers.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. I'm Michelle Castner, Director of Elementary, ESOL, and World Languages. And I'm pleased to be here to share our plan for our English learners. For stage two, we specifically are thinking about English learners with WEATA levels one and two in grades four through 12. A WEATA level one student is a student who's brand new to the English language. And a WEATA level two is an emergent bilingual. And what we know from research is that English learners who have not reached English proficiency by fourth grade find it really challenging to master the curriculum. English learners must acquire language and content simultaneously, and the content really increases in rigor in fourth grade. And of course, direct instruction is crucial for level ones and level twos. And also, it's important that they acquire the academic language needed to access the content. And of course, this in-person access is optional, and students can remain at home if a family chooses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castner. Stage three. In stage three, most students will continue to be virtual learners. We will increase access to the building and to specialized services for all our English learners, our special education students, and any student that we have identified at this point as not engaging in the virtual learning. In this stage, we begin to bring students into our hybrid learning model. We believe our youngest learners are the ones who will not thrive as well in a virtual environment, pre-K through three. In the past, you've seen the reach search on learning to read by grade three as the, as well as the COVID slide information for our youngest learners. We believe that we must bring these students to in-person learning as soon as we safely can. The key feature in stage four is the continuation of bringing students into the building to participate in hybrid learning. In this stage, grades four through 12 will attend classes in the building. If you recall, we spent our earlier meetings in July and packing this stage. Just a reminder slide for the hybrid model, we believe that we are able to offer in-person learning based on transportation requests for elementary students to attend four days per week and secondary students to attend either one or two days per week. In stage five, all students can receive in-person instruction in a more typical attendance schedule and operational practices. As noted before, that will we could continue to be a virtual option for parents and students. As I stated earlier, these stages were developed by listening to feedback from our stakeholders. After developing the concept of progressive stages, we sought feedback on both the concept of stages and the factors to determine the progression from one stage to another. Dr. Kaiser will share more details about the feedback we received on the stages and on the progression.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Earlier this week, we spoke with about 175 teachers from across the school division and had the opportunity to put the stages in front of them and ask them some questions to gain their insight. The feedback trends that we, that we heard from them included the, in the positives that this progression seems very logical, that there's a logical sequence to it. There is consideration of risk factors and student need. They really liked the idea of the gradual re-entry of students. And they also appreciated the fact that the, the staff would have access to the classroom and the resources of the schools. The other thing that they, they appreciated was the opportunity for reevaluation each quarter to determine what the next stage would be. They did have some concerns. Some of those concerns that they brought forth was just recognizing that we need to make sure that we are providing very clear, very specific communication to our families and our staff. There, there are concerns about the logistics of physical space as more and more students enter the buildings, and we recognize the social distancing needs that exist there. We, they also recognize that there need to be very clearly defined parameters as we move from one stage to the next. And we also need to make sure that the needs of our, our most at-risk students are met and recognize that there is risk to staff and students throughout any of the in-person stages. One of the things that they did say across the board pretty loudly and clearly was once, regardless of the stage that we began at, just having the decision for where to begin would be really helpful in the planning as we get ready to start the school year. We also put this in front of our executive leadership team, which includes our principals and our department heads. And what they, they echoed many of the trends that we heard from the teachers. And in the things that I would just share from them, they want to make sure that we are ensuring that our community, our students, and our staff are safe as we think about the return to in-person learning. They, they also recognize the importance of serving our most at-risk learners. And they appreciate that the phasing allows us to kind of grow as a school as we move from one stage to the next. And they also feel that this plan allows for developing teacher capacity as the stages evolve. We do know that the, 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 how students are in. We do know that the, 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 how students are in school definitely impacts the, the teaching staff and the support staff as well. And in each of this, in each of the stages, the number of people who will be doing, who have the ability to do in-person teaching versus virtual teaching is going to shift and change. So you can see on the continuum here that when we begin in stage one, all of our teachers are virtually teaching or teaching virtually, I should say, and as we move through the stages, more and more teachers come into the buildings to physically work with our students. We will be able to keep some teachers teaching in that virtual manner throughout the entire continuum based on the students whose families request that they are in a virtual learning module, model throughout. We also know that there is impact to our support staff. And when I talk about our support staff, I'm talking about our building services, child nutrition, and transportation amongst other supports such as our teaching assistants and others who support the work that we do. One of the things that we know is this, this group, if we look at stage one, is very much negatively impacted by their regular work because they would, when we don't have students in the building, they're, they're, the work as they know it may not exist. We are looking at the potentials for modified work schedule, telework, and alternate work schedules for all of our support staff in this model. There is a possibility for reduction in all of their hours. As we move through each of the stages, though, there will still be the need for probably some modified work and alternate work, but we, as we move from one stage to the next, you will see the, the number of employees who will then be able to move more towards their regular work schedule and doing the things that they are regularly doing. Our department heads of our support services have, are working together to brainstorm ways that we could possibly use our employees in cross-functional ways to best support the needs of our students until we are at the point where they are all being able to work their full work schedules.
I will now speak to how the progressions of stages will work. So first, the board will select a starting stage for the first nine-week grading period. That starting stage does not have to be stage one. The shifts in stages would then be made at the nine-week mark unless it is necessary to move to a lower stage, which could occur immediately. Halfway through the grading period, the superintendent will make a recommendation to the board as to whether or not the school, school division can go forward based on numerous factors. One of the most significant factors we know will be the health of our community. So I will give three slides to review how we are looking at that. First, I want to share an excerpt from the Regional Emergency Operations Center's weekly phase scorecard. The EOC is a joint operation with the city, the county, and UVA. They have eight different metrics, but I want to call your attention to the first two. We want to see a downward trend over 14 days of percent positive tests in new cases. As you can see in the scorecard for this week, that metric is not met in our region at this point. The second snapshot I want to provide is a relatively new one. It was based on newly released dash, newly released dashboard from the Virginia Department of Health that is accessible at this point only to public health officials. We saw it for the first time on Tuesday and then met with Dr. Bonds yesterday on it. Again, we are looking at cases and percent positivity. In this case, we're looking for what they call case incident rate per 100,000. So that is a seven-day moving average of the daily number of cases per 100,000 of population. So right now in Alamo County, that is 10.1. Now, our goal would be that that would be less than 10. And then our goal would not only that be less than 10, but it would be decreasing, and at this point it's increasing. The, what is the test percent positivity? That is, again, a goal of less than 10%. Right now, we're meeting that goal, and we also want to see that trending downward. It is trending downward, but just, just as of recent, we want to see that trend going a little longer. I do want to caveat the test percent positivity is a good point of data to look at, but there is some limitations because often testing strategy can inform that. So for instance, if you have a large-scale community testing event, a lot of people being tested that have no chance of being exposed or no symptoms, and so that can artificially decrease that positivity rate. And the last comment I want to make on our current COVID-19 conditions in the Alamo region is around testing. This is of concern. Access to testing remains limited, and those that are tested are seeing much longer delays in, in the results. And so we know a key strategy of keeping our students and staff safe will be to identify cases quickly, isolate and quarantine quickly, and our current testing situation will not allow that. So with that background, I want to present our recommendations for what factors would determine the progression between stages. They include health guidance, ordinances, public health data, our ability to resource and staff, and feedback. I'll comment on each, the current state of each, and whether they support in-person instruction or not at this point in time. So first, CDC guidance right now does support in-person instruction as long as mitigation strategies are in place. Second, there are no executive orders or local ordinances that would prevent us from providing the hybrid instruction model that Ms. Collins presented. While the data that informed the recent board of supervisors' action is of concern, the ordinance itself does not apply to schools. Third, the current COVID conditions in the region, as referenced in earlier slides, COVID is in our community. We are not a hotspot like other parts of the country, but the increasing trend is a concern, and the impact of UVA students in a month is a great unknown. Next, as I mentioned, sorry, next, as I mentioned, we are, have serious concerns about testing. As evidenced by our staff data, our ability to staff in-person instruction with staff that feel confident about their safety is not adequate at this point. And lastly, feedback. Feedback has been numerous but varied. We know that many, many are eager to return, but many, many are terrified about their safety. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Haas to present his recommendation.
Thank you very much, Rosalyn. I am recommending stage two for reopening Alamo County Public Schools on September the eighth. This will have most of our students beginning the new year with virtual instruction. There will be provisions for students who do not have internet access or whose internet access is not adequate to come into the schools. Some students with special needs and some who are English language learners also will be able to come into schools to work with learning coaches in accessing virtual instructional assignments. The safety of students, families, and staff, together with a commitment to equity and quality in instruction we provide to students this fall are the standards I am using in making my recommendation. Whichever stage the school board chooses today, the decision will apply to the first nine weeks of our new school year from September eighth through November the seventh. Halfway through the first quarter, I will make a recommendation to the board for the model we will use for the nine weeks beginning November eighth. Under stage two, we would be expecting between 1,000 and 1,500 students would be in our schools in September. That's about 10% of our students. So that would be about 90%, that would be learning virtually. These students will be supported by teachers who volunteer to serve, and the students who choose to come to school will also be volunteers. In both cases, we will be completely transparent with staff and families as we have been throughout this process. I repeat, in stage two, all of the students and staff who choose to attend will do so voluntarily. With regard to employees, work schedules will be modified for classified staff to continue allow online work from home, but there will be a need for a limited number of staff to follow their normal in-person work schedule. Employees will be contacted by their principal or supervisor in the near future regarding work schedules. The virtual instruction we will be providing in September will significantly differ from that offered in the spring. Schools were closed by, by the governor on Friday, March 13th, with virtual instruction taking effect on Monday, March 16th. At that time, the State Department of Education directed all school divisions that all virtual instruction be based upon a review of previously covered material. And we didn't transition into new material until after spring break. Unlike the spring, we now have the benefit of many lessons learned and of extensive planning time for our educators that will include professional development on virtual strategies and techniques. Many of our educators, I would say, all of them are excited about what they can, what new things they've learned and what they can try with their classes in a virtual environment. Instruction will include specific class schedules for students, engaging and meaningful content, and an emphasis on meaningful assignments of student, assessments of student performance and progress. In addition to providing students with the option of coming into their school to complete online assignments, families will be able to have assignments delivered to them at home in a paper format or in a recorded video. The division also can provide hotspot devices to homes to connect them to local Wi-Fi providers. It also is possible that families without adequate internet service or with financial needs could participate in a Comcast program that would provide broadband services where available. Our school division would pay for the reduced cost of this service. Principals will be in touch with families to provide information about their child's schedule and to answer questions that they may have. For those students who will be using school transportation to come into the school, bus route information will be provided in the parent portal by late August, or they can call their child's school if they're unable to access the parent portal. We will continue to closely work with our local health department in monitoring COVID-19 cases and the community spread of this illness, and will notify our, everyone as soon as possible about any changes to our operational plans. While I make, while I will make a recommendation to the board as to which stage to go into each nine weeks, I will also have the authority to move the school system backward in stages without board action so that we can respond to swift changes in our local health data. The thousands, and I mean thousands, of ideas, suggestions, and questions we receive from our parents and employees and from our students has been extraordinarily helpful. For the most updated information on community and employee resources around COVID-19, the division's cleaning and disinfectant procedures and even updated information on our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning models are all available on, on our webpage, on our return to school page. Again, my recommendation to the board is to start on September the eighth in stage two, and I'm making that recommendation out of concern for the safety and well-being of our students, employees, and families, as well as the quality and equity with which we can provide learning opportunities for all students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas and staff for that presentation. As the beginning slide of the presentation showed, it would be best if we have questions right now just on the presentation. And then after those questions, I would like to have a motion as to which stage we will be moving into while reopening. So first, do we have any questions for staff directly related to the presentation?
I, I guess, I, I think some families who might be listening would like to know what synchronous or asynchronous teaching is.
Sure, synchronous teaching is teaching in a virtual environment where the students and the teacher are in the environment together. So it'd be just like this meeting. This is a synchronous session where we're working together, learning in person, not in person, but in the same time and space. Asynchronous is when students are doing independent projects, project-based learning, skill practice, those kinds of things that they can do offline.
Okay, I, I know the concern of some parents has been, what if their schedules can't accommodate participating synchronously? How will that work, Debbie?
We will, we will be providing videotapes of the synchronous sessions. So in a Zoom session like this, we would record it and post it for students to be able to access. Some teachers will be providing video that they could do beforehand for more of a flipped classroom. So we've got a couple of options for teachers, but at the least, we would be videotaping our Zoom or our Schoology conference sessions.
Just one more thing to bug you. Those students who can't participate in synchronous would still have an opportunity to communicate with their teacher at some point.
Absolutely, absolutely. We would know who those students are. And just as we did in the spring, we could provide other ways of doing that. Flash drives are something that we, we learned early in the spring could accommodate students that didn't have access. So that could also accommodate students whose schedules weren't being synch, synchronized with the school schedule.
Any questions? On the ELL slide, it said that it's important that students who are learning a new language have direct instruction, but my understanding of the access that we're offering is not direct instruction. So I'd like a little clarity around that.
If I could add, it would be direct instruction through a synchronous lesson. So it would be a student in, inside of a building, sitting next to a learning coach, and they would be looking at a virtual lesson that would be done in a synchronous manner.
And the ESOL
Yeah, go ahead, Debbie.
And the ESOL teacher would be there accompanying them. So that would be this more of a specialized approach. So they could be helping translating. They could provide vocabulary development for a lesson before a student saw it. So it's that kind of accommodation that could happen in, in the building with the student.
And then in terms of the voluntary nature of the teaching, do we have enough of those specialized teachers for ESOL and for special education to staff those classrooms?
Yes, I'm pleased to say that I did an informal survey with our ESOL teachers. They're outstanding. And we have many teachers who have said, have said yes. They would be more than willing to come in and support our English learners.
Ms. Kastner, did you have a number?
As of yesterday, we had 22 teachers. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as far as special education goes, our principals are working with each of their staff. I don't know the exact specifics there, but we do know that we have teachers across the board who are willing to come back in. Mr. Kirst, I don't know if you have anything additional there.
No, just want to confirm that, that I actually do not have the data because we work as a, at the school base, but intend to get that information ASAP.
Okay, in the event that you do not have enough volunteers to do it, how would those students be served in the building?
There, there would be a couple of options. We could look to hire staff that would be willing and interested in coming in and supporting those students. Depending on the numbers of students we have and the, and the locations. For special education, it may be that we could do some regional programming if there was two students here and two students in another site.
That is true, Deb, that we have talked about that.
So for those, especially higher-needs students, are you looking at like a one-to-one staffing for that if people would need, if we would need to bring them in? Or what, what would that staffing look like?
I, I would not commit to a one-to-one staffing. I'd be looking to use the safety guidelines and, and you know, the, the kid's responsiveness to instruction and what the needs were. But Mrs. Lee, I, I mean, I'd, I'd ask for more clarity on this, the one-to-one question, because that means one thing.
Sure, and I, you know, I, I am just curious about staffing that because it, it doesn't, it just doesn't seem that we have clarity around whether we have enough special education staff, and I was just wondering if we have an idea yet of even how many we would need.
Right, no, and that would be the thing is, you know, doing things in, in order and getting a sense of where we need to go. But we're on the cusp of doing just that. Who's coming? What are the, the kids that would fit the stage that we're willing to work in? And then maximizing all our resources. We do have special education instructional assistance and a large group of them that we could also access to support. So I, I just don't have the dated, honestly, to say one way or the other, like we won't have enough. What will we do outside of problem solving, as Deb mentioned, to hire where we need to, or reassign folks to meet that need?
How long would the students be in the building, all of them?
I think we could, we would have conversations with parents around that. I think our initial thoughts would, it would be a pretty much a regular schedule, depending on the age of the student or the level of the student. So elementary day might look like eight thirty to two, a high school day might look like nine to four, nine fifteen or so to four. So we would try to match the schedule that the schools were offering for students in a synchronized way. Kevin, would you have a different idea for special education?
No, that would be the default, I would think, much like, and that's the difficult part of this. Individualized education plans are just that, individualized. Would, could there be a case where a student and a, and a parent in school workout, maybe half-day would provide FAP and we could do asynchronous the other time? Yeah, I would never take anything off the table to say this is a one-size-fits-all by any means, but I would start there with, yeah, let's, let's fit in to a as right normal of a school day as possible, and then work with the family and the student to see what, what would offer them meaningful benefit to their program.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Collins, oh, go ahead.
I actually saw Graham about to speak as well, so. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Jono. I was going to ask specifically, who are the learning coaches?
The learning coaches, we would, we would ask for teachers. When we know that there's teachers, we've seen, you've seen some of them in the emails that are eager to come back into, to school. So those would be teachers that would be offering their class, or they could be support teachers. So I think it's a variety of, of our educators that would be interested in working with students as a guide on the side.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Another question for the WEDA students. The quote that Michelle gave about how important it is for, how difficult it is for students in fourth grade and above or below WEDA score to learn, what strategies, why aren't we doing the younger students? Wouldn't you want them to have a better grasp of the language if they don't arrive at fourth grade, not having a good grasp of the language?
That's a great point, Katrina. I think we'd love to have all of our ESOL students in. I think we wanted to look at starting incrementally. So that's why we chose fourth through twelfth grade, primarily because the content increases so much.
In addition, most, when you're, you're learning to read, the phonics and the sounds and the, the decoding is a lot of what you do with young learners. And that's the same if, if you're working with English learners. You're teaching them sounds, you're teaching them the alphabet. So some of that is very similar in the younger grades, in kindergarten and first grade.
And then I had a follow-up question from the town hall, and I didn't, I don't know if we're getting that, this granular about what, what the virtual learning looks like. But as a parent to incoming kindergartner and a first grader and someone raised at the town hall, those, that age of a children requires a parent to be right next to them. My son just had speech therapy today and I have to sit next to him because he keeps trying to put his foot up to the camera to show his teacher his foot. They're flexible when they're young. And so I have a lot of concerns as a parent in this, this parent set, and I know my groups, a lot of people are just going to homeschool their kids. You know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be the one doing all this stuff with them, and it's learning to read. So now am I going to be beholden, me and all the rest of the parents of young, younger kids to log on to certain times to check certain things? Or can I just access the curriculum at my own pace?
We're trying to accommodate families, so we would do both. We would have some synchronous times with, with all our students so that when a part of the, the elementary school experience, especially with young children, is developing their social emotional skills. And that, that has to happen with interactions with other children. And so while this is somewhat of an artificial way of interacting, we, we do know that we can provide those interactions. So whether it be whole group, half a group, small groups, individualized, I think all that's on the table. And that's what the teachers are working on right now, is how we're very cognizant of the, the barriers for young children. They need to be using their hands to learn, they need to be learning concepts. And that happens in a social interaction in a social environment. And this constraint of virtual learning is such, is such a barrier for some of that, that I, absolutely, we recognize all that.
Yeah, I know.
Teachers are working really hard to figure out how to do that. So we would do synchronous, if that's helpful. We also will record sessions. I think our teachers are very willing to think, had the elementary principals the other day, say, you know, we've been thinking about, could you offer something in the evenings that would be more helpful to parents? So maybe three of the third grade teachers do it during the day, and one third grade teacher does it in the afternoon or evening. So we're brainstorming, we're trying to think about accommodating not only the needs of the, of the curriculum and the standards, but also the needs of parents and children as we develop the kinds of ways we can help students and educators figure this out.
So it sounds like we're still working out the details. And so I guess if I were to restate my question, the, the question I have is about accountability, because ultimately that's what I want to know. So what, since I'm going to be the one implementing their, their education, and I'm speaking very specifically to the third grader under, which we've gotten a lot of feedback from parents, that's a problematic age to do virtual learning. So how am I going to know that my kid's on target? And in what accountability structures are we going to have in place? Are we not going to have? But I don't need an answer for that right now, Debbie, because I don't think that's the purpose of this, is to get to that level of detail around it, but.
Well, I will say, we are developing, the teachers have asked and the principal has asked for common division assessments. We're going to be working on common pacing and common, so we, we know that we, those things are going to be developed. So you will have feedback on this standard and where your child is working on it. I totally understand the, the accountability of the parents to get that done. I-
If there's nothing else that I can convey in this meeting right now, I know it's a frustrating situation for parents because just listening to you, and this is someone who's like got a seat at the table. What I am hearing, and this is me knowing it's coming down the line, is that and I was a former teacher, I'm going to become a teacher. I'm going to have things, assessments I'm going to be giving, things I'm checking off, criteria I'm doing, and making sure they're signing up for the things. And I just want to make sure that at the forefront of our mind when we're planning this virtual learning for the younger kids, we take into account the fact that it is, requires such a big amount of parental involvement, and not every kid has that.
And I know you noticed, and that's within our Stage Three, that's the group we're trying to bring in as soon as we can.
There any other questions from board members?
I just have one quick one, and, and Ms. Collins, when you were going through the different stages, I noticed that in Stage Three, the homeless children were not included, or maybe I just missed that. Is there a reason?
We did research on that, and those students lack internet access. So they really would be in the internet access category.
I had a follow-up question about social distancing in those classes with the special education and the English language learners. How would we do that? Because you were talking about having a guide next to the student. And then also, so there's a distance, I just have a distance question about that. And then also for the special education students, how we would be able to have masking and social distancing in those rooms?
That was, that was a figure of speech, a guide on the side that's six feet away for the, any student that we're bringing in. We would still, all the mitigation strategies would still be in play. That's why we're trying to think about group sizes of ten or less. And so there would be an adult with each group, there would be ten or fewer students in a sized space that could accommodate that with social distancing, distancing and mask. Kevin, do you want to, Mr. Kirst?
No, just, just, and you know, you know, as we're moving forward, a lot of this is in the works. Like there are protocols for teaching students, right? This is the new norm versus they're going to wear it or they're not. It's a new skill. And we're going to develop protocol to teach students with disabilities to wear masks that otherwise, just to say they'll never, is not acceptable, right? It's, these are new skills, and to work from a distance, to wear a mask are things we are looking at as new skills in the new norm. And we're going to provide support to families that they could start as soon as we know which stage we're, we're going to be in to communicate that out, start committing, connecting with our parents that we're going to ask about coming in and then sharing with them. If you're coming in, let's talk about what you could start now to get your child ready to be in this new environment. So that is an instructional model that we recognize is going to have to be taught and prepared for before the first day of school.
Okay, are there any other questions from any board members?
Yes. What do we know about the pool of substitutes? And related to that is what happens if a, if someone does become infected? Do we, are we going to have a protocol for that? I know it's, it's difficult to figure out because there's a lot of different things you have to do in each case. But if someone does get sick, what happens to their ten-person pod?
Sure, so I'm going to start first with the substitute piece. We know on a good day, the number of subs that we have is very limited, and that is an ongoing challenge of ours across the school division. One of the things that we are doing is we are right now going through our, our list of subs. We are trying to, we have developed some protocols for some guidelines or guidance, I should say, around the use of subs because we also know that we are trying to limit the number of people our students interact with, and obviously the adults as well, so the substitutes included. So we're working on some guidelines around that. We'll be reaching out to our subs that are in the pool, making sure that they're aware of our mitigation strategies and that we will, we will make sure that they are willing to be on board with us. We'll probably assign them to a specific school. We also know that with our, with our, the potential of some of our support employees, our support staff, there might be some availability to have them do some substituting for us, or be assigned to certain schools to be able to help with that. We're also, we also know that as unemployment numbers increase, that tends to bode well for our substitute pool as well. So we're, we're hoping we will be able to recruit and hire some additional substitutes too. But we, we recognize that that is a challenge. As far as the steps, if we have known cases, I'm going to call on Eileen Gomez, I think, or Rosalyn. Eileen, Eileen, if you could step in.
Yes, sure.
You could introduce yourself to the group too.
Okay, I'm Eileen Gomez. I am the school nurse coordinator, and I've taken the position of COVID coordinator for this upcoming year. And we do have some policies or some procedures in place for what we'll do when either a staff member or a student gets sick. We have the, the flow of what will happen if somebody develops symptoms while at school, as well as a separate flow for what will happen if someone gets diagnosed outside of school. And in either case, it will involve contacting the health department and working with them to identify close contacts. So that's the contact track, contact tracing that you've heard about. And they, they said that we probably will not have to include the whole class as contacts if they are in fixed seating, six feet apart. We can just probably do the kids who are, if it's fixed seating, the ones that are just directly around that student. And those students or staff members who are identified as close contacts will be asked to quarantine, stay at home for fourteen days and monitor for symptoms. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
And if I could just jump back in with the sub piece, but with one more thing. The thing to remember is in stages one, two, and three, we have a very limited number of students in the buildings. And so with the limited number of students in the buildings, we will not have as great of a need for subs. So there may be more availability for the people who don't have the regular work too.
I have a question that I just got emailed by someone, and I just want to ask it on their behalf, because it's a fair question. For synchronous learning, how, how is attendance monitored and will it count against people if they're not there?
The guidance that the state has given us that we are pushing towards is as long as a student shows up. Now, talk to you about what that means. That could be, they would, they would come to the synchronous session. That might mean they would reach out and talk, work with the teacher that day. It could be that they would hand in an assignment. So all those ways would be counted as being present. So we're not only looking at when we see you, but when we see you doing work. So the state is allowing the guidance around that to shift from being in my sight to, to being counting the work that they'll be doing at any point in time during that day. So they would be counted as present.
So even if I'm not necessarily on the live stream, if I turn in my homework, then I was there?
Yes.
Also, our learning management system logs can also show that a student has logged in that day and done some work. So the logs will also be supportive documentation.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to thank our staff for, since July ninth, coming up with this just tremendous plan. They have done an outstanding job in almost everything that I think we can think of that we had questions about. This plan sort of addresses, so I'd really like to commend Dr. Haas and the entire central staff, along with all of the other people, including our teachers, who've played a part in coming up with this plan. A tremendous plan, I think, given the time that we had to work. Again, are there any other questions from any of our school board members?
Graham, I would just like to echo what you just said. I think the, the amount of work that's gone into this is extraordinary. And I think there's an elegant progression to the degree that you can be elegant in during a pandemic of, you know, increased student contact. And I think our plan was so good, in fact, the city managed to copy it for their plan. So that's, at least we're both on the same page.
I'm happy to go ahead and make the motion so that we can open it up to discussion.
Okay.
It's kind of a lengthy one, so buckle up. Okay, I move that the Alamo County Public Schools institute Stage Two to begin the 2020-2021 school year encompassing the first nine-week marking period. And further, that four and a half weeks prior to the end of the marking period, the superintendent shall make a recommendation to the school boards to either continue Stage Two or initiate the educational program of another stage for the following marking period based on an evaluation of the following factors. One, current COVID-19 conditions in Alamo County, in the Alamo County region and within the Alamo County Public Schools, including but not limited to community transmission, testing positivity rates, applicable state and local school dashboards that may inform school reopening and operating plans, and other public health data. Two, guidance offered by the CDC and the state and local health authorities. Three, applicable executive orders and local ordinances that may impact the ability to provide successful classroom learning. Four, the status of COVID-19 testing and tracking capabilities in Alamo County region. Five, ability of the Alamo County Public Schools, including the availability of sufficient staffing and other resources to implement the school division's instructional and health plans. And six, the feedback and input from stakeholders and school communities. I further move that following the first marking period, the superintendent shall make a recommendation to the school board at the halfway point of each remaining marking period in the school year as to the stage that should be implemented for the next succeeding marking period. And I further move that the superintendent may, at any time, return the Alamo County Public Schools to a prior stage as reevaluation of the factors enumerated above or that I stated before may warrant, and in this event, shall so advise the school board at its next meeting following such action. Following such action.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Mrs. Carlson and second by Ms. Dale Caro. That Alamo County Public Schools would enter or our reopening at stage two. The motion also included changes and stipulations that we would need. Uh, changes that the superintendent could make at given points in time. And I think those are the main things within that, uh, within the motion. So, uh, is there any discussion on the motion? The floor is open for discussion. Anybody would like to start?
I guess I can start off. I don't mind starting off, um. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone who gave input. Um, I read through, actually last night I tried to go through a bunch of them again, only made it up to Ju- started July. Um, I read through the hundreds of the emails. I was appreciative of the over a thousand people that attended the virtual town halls. Um, I went and looked through the survey results. Um, and I appreciated the thousands of people who filled out the survey results. I even appreciate the one person who sent me snail mail, always enjoy getting mail. Uh, in my mailbox. Uh, and thank you to the staff who worked so tirelessly to basically craft the solution that is responsive to so many different stakeholders. And there's, um, in a situation that's, there really is no great solution, to be honest. My vote would be for option two. The, the stories that have resonated with me personally are the, the teachers who have written and the parents who have written us about the students that we cannot. Reach effectively with virtual learning. Um, it's the ESOL teacher, former teacher of the year, who said that forty percent of his students did not log on. A single time and they're eleventh graders. Uh, my mom's an ESOL high school teacher. And she's actually way prepared for virtual learning because as an, as an underpaid teacher perhaps, she teaches online to. Students in China, so she has a whole room in her house dedicated with like a green screen lighting. And I remember a very heartfelt discussion she had with me in the spring that she was worried that her half of her students just disappeared. She was worried they would never come back and I honestly don't know if they will. I think the same thing with their special education students. I think of the ten percent of the people in the survey that said that on the electronic survey, he said they don't have adequate internet. To, um, keep up with the virtual learning. And I think of the moms groups I'm in, the parenting groups I'm in. Uh, where parents are scrambling, um. Scrambling to figure out ways around this homeschooling, forming pods, uh, getting hiring tutors, hiring teachers, hiring nannies to somehow implement this. And make it work for their family. I think of the parents who wrote us and said they're going to be putting their kids in private schools, which are remaining open. And then I think of all the people that don't have those resources. We're the resource. We have, um, a two hundred million dollar budget. We have hundreds of thousands of square footage of space. If we can't make it so that we, if we, I, it would be unfeasible to me to say that we cannot safely educate even a single student. Every student matters. So even if it's only getting in the fifty students that are about to drop out because we're not offering them an adequate learning environment. I would rather be able to offer, I think we can safely offer something to them and that is not saying that our most vulnerable. And our most high risk students get to be guinea pigs and they get to get exposed to the risk. First of all, option two is completely voluntary. But, um, I think we can do it safely. I really think we can do it safely, um, and even if it's only the most high risk. Most high need students, we at the very least need to be staged to, and to be completely frank, I personally would be comfortable with a staged three. Um, but I think the will of the community is important and my read of the situation and our employers, I think. Stage two is a good place to start and go from there. I tried to talk fast, which probably made that worse, but I didn't want to take up all this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Other comments from board members? Or from Malani, Malani, um, feel free to chime in at any time during this discussion also. So other comments?
I, I. This is by far the hardest thing that we've dealt with in my five years on the board. There is just no, there is no good answer to any of this. We've received literally thousands of emails and every one of them. Has a perspective that matters. I mean, it's just, you know, it's sort of, I mean, we have people saying absolutely open the schools immediately. We have people saying. Don't open the schools ever and. They all have good basis for their positions. I mean, this is a, this is a tough, tough situation, so I just want to say. I really appreciate all the work staff has put into this and I really do because I mean, it, it is. I, I, the level of, the level of effort that has gone in is, is kind of amazing. Um, I, I am sort of in between a one and a two. All things being equal, I would, I would be in, 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 in one, uh, because I am a fairly risk averse person. But I think we do have to, to, to listen to the voices of our teachers. Who are saying they're going to lose some of the students who are English, English language learners and. Our, our parents and our teachers of special education and I've spoken to a number of them who've said, look. My child's not going to be able to do this at home. And you know, I, and I think I, I, I said this once before, but I'll reiterate it. I think that there's, there's an argument to be made. For all of our students. That if they, if they want it and their family wants it, that we ought to be prepared to give people a red shirt year. Um, you know, that, that, that they can re- redo the year because this, this pandemic will not last forever. We will get through this and past it. And it may simply be that, that some of the children don't receive everything they need this year. I think we need to be prepared as a board. Um, to give that offer to the family to say, hey, look, if you didn't get third grade. There is no stigma in any way, shape or form to say, hey, you know what? Let's redo third grade and make sure you get everything you need before we advance you. Um, but all that being said, I, I, you know, I, I trust Dr. Haas, I trust his staff. Uh, Dr. Haas is recommending that we start it too. Uh, I absolutely have faith in him that he'll do that correctly and that. Um, if, if we need to, you know, my, my big concern is that when UVA reopens. In about three weeks after the kids get here, we might have a real problem as a community and. I, I believe Dr. Haas's assurances that if, hey, if the numbers go south, we close immediately. And, and, and with that provision, I will be supporting the motion.
You know, I think that the more, um, once we make this decision, whichever way we go. That more answers are going to be made, uh, available to us because there's going to be more direction. Uh, and, and direction in light of where people like Kevin Curse go. To, to follow up and, and really start to nail down some numbers. Um, you know, I think that, uh. We, we don't want to deprive our kids in, uh, who could benefit from stage two. From at least nine works of instruct, nine weeks of instruction provided in the manner that in which they need to receive it. I mean, that doesn't need to happen. Um, if we move, as, as Dr. Haas was saying, if we open in stage two, he can move immediately. To stage one, uh, where, uh, if, if, if we need to, but we can't turn the other direction. And go, uh, up the scale, meaning in larger numbers, stages, uh, without at least four and a half weeks worth of, uh, of, of notice. Um, and, but the, the one thing that really does it for me on stage two. Is, uh, it doesn't include mandatory attendance and that's, that's a big issue. Uh, as regards the students and the parents and the teachers all knowing that they can opt out. In stage two if they absolutely need to. And this is the primary difference in my mind between stages one and, and stage two. Um, it was an interesting thing that, that, uh. I got curious as to, uh, how many years of experience went into the making of this plan? And, um, uh, and so I, I learned that. Uh, the work of Dr. Haas, his cabinet, as well as the principals and directors throughout the school division. Their cumulative years of experience within, uh, Alamo County Public Schools. Is one thousand four hundred and eighteen years. And about, uh, um, uh, three hundred less, fewer years of that are in administration. So there's a lot of experience that, that go, that went into the decision making. And these are people who have the best interest of our students, our teachers, our staff members. And all of these people's families in the fronts of their minds at all times. Um, I, I will vote, uh, for stage two. And that being said, I, I know that this isn't an easy one for any of our board members. It certainly wasn't for me. Uh, but, you know, I will work tirelessly and will support. Any decision that's made here by the board this afternoon. Thanks.
Mr. Page, may I go next?
Yes, right.
Well, it's, uh, I too support phase, starting in stage two. Um, for many of the reasons that my colleagues, Ms. Carlson, Mr. Oberg and Mr. Elkaro said. Uh, and I've read many, many, many of the hu- you know, hundreds of letters that we received. And there were teachers and some students even and, uh. Many parents arguing passionately, passionately for their child, their family. But our decision is what, how do we balance? The health risks to our fourteen thousand students and our twenty seven hundred employees, so we have a slightly different job. Than individual families do. I think based on the fact that option two. Provides some access to our, some of our most vulnerable. It's all voluntary. Uh, and we do have, uh, an immediate option of reverting to the earlier stage. Uh, that's the stage that I will vote for.
Graham.
Are there other comments?
Yes. So, uh, while I would very much like to be in the same mindset as Katrina. I, uh, I am, I just don't feel like I can put our most, uh, vulnerable students into the middle of a grand experiment. And then have them take that home to their communities, which are already being disproportionately affected. I feel like we have, um, responsibility to the community to. Slow the community spread and, um. And, and I'm, I'm not sure that, that I can vote for two.
Thanks, Ms. Osman. Yeah, yeah, Judy.
Um, so I, uh, I respect everybody's arguments here. I feel like I, I really respect. Our board and, um, the difficulty. I know that we all have been. Wrestling with this a lot. Um, I don't know if there's a waking moment that I'm not thinking about it, to be honest with you. So, uh, and I respect all that, um, and I support a stage one opening. Uh, I don't feel like there's any reason to believe or any safer today than we were when we went in shutdown. We're actually regularly seeing. Much higher numbers of new cases in our health district, uh, than we have at any point during this pandemic, especially since July fourth. And there hasn't, that hasn't abated. Um, the data that Roslyn presented also does, you know, makes me feel like. We're not ready to have students in our schools. Now, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into the stages. Because I do think that that's a great way to bring students in, but right now, I don't think that we're in, we're ready to be in stage two. Um, I, I also don't think that we have any reason to believe it's going to get any better, um, in our health district. Uh, the cohort that we have with the second highest number of cases is the twenty to twenty-nine year old age group. And we're going to get a lot more, uh, when UVA opens and so that's just with UVA closed. And then we're going to get a lot more of them when it opens, so, and we have many community members who work there. Uh, it's not just the students who are affected by that, so. I, I'm not given to believe that there's going to be less risk than there was when we shut down. Um, there are also, I'm still very troubled by a lot of unknowns about this disease and all these things are not things that we. You know, are in control of, um, and I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone for them. I'm not saying like we had a bad plan. I'm just saying we have a good plan with different stages and I don't think we're ready for stage two. Um, there are a lot of unknowns about the disease. Uh, there just was a study like someone sent me at one o'clock today about how kids. Carry a higher load of the virus. That's in the New York Times today from like twelve P M. Um, so, but we do also know that, um, students ten and up. Uh, pass the virus along just as quickly as adults do, which is very. Um, you know, we don't, we still don't know the long-term effects and the evidence that is mounting is not great on that. Um, I, I just think that. If we have misgivings about bringing staff and students into the building, then we have misgivings about bringing staff and students from those communities. That are more likely to experience worse outcomes from COVID. It weighs on me heavily how we can serve those communities. I mean, like, and again, I know that we all have struggled with this. Um, but I can't vote to bring them in yet. I, I, I don't see our community with the lack of testing, with the slow testing, um. You know, uh, people I know who have been exposed to it and have had no contact tracing. Uh, and again, like, I'm not, I'm not here to blame anyone or cast aspersions. I'm just saying, this is the reality that we're looking at. And the reality also includes, um, great health disparities. And so for me, I don't feel comfortable bringing in people from those communities. Um, that have those, that suffer from those great health disparities. Um, I feel like our division, like every single division across the United States for the next month. Has an enormous task, whichever way we go today. Our division has an enormous task of how to educate. And serve all of our populations and. For me, when there are going to be quarantines or when there, and we know there are going to be, I mean, we, we don't have any reason to believe that there aren't. I, I think we will wish that we had concentrated on serving those populations now for the next month. Of figuring out how we do serve them, then having to face those situations quickly. I, I think we're creative. I think we're innovative and I think we can solve those problems. So that's why I will be supporting a stage one.
If I could just make a comment to that, um, because Ms. Lee, I, I think you're absolutely right on so much of what you just said. And what I'd like to, to ask Dr. Haas, because I believe this is what, what he would do. But if, if, um, if the, if you and your team, Dr. Haas. Um, feel that the, a decision to move to stage one. If we approve stage two today and if there is a, a, a sufficient concern and information. That would lead you and your team to switch before September first. Would that be your, your MO on that?
Yes, sir. We, we will monitor the dashboard and the conditions weekly and. The, today, today, it's a vote of support from the board to help us begin to have stability. We really need stability as an organization or at some point we will not have an organization. We really need stability as an organization or at some point we will no longer have an organization. But we also need flexibility. We need flexibility so that, um, each week we can look at the dashboard. And make a determination as to whether or not we need to make a change. So each week from now, we will check in, um. The, uh, Virginia Department of Health has now developed a school division specific dashboard that they shared with. The Virginia Department of Education on, um, Monday, which was shared with us on Tuesday. It's embargoed, it's not, uh, it's only shared with local health department officials, so we have to contact. To get that information, but it will give us great detailed information about our locality that we can add to our dashboard. And you all, I mean, just like anything else, you have my promise, um, that we will update you on where we stand with that. And if, if we need to, uh, as we go into September eighth, we can, we can drop back from fa- from stage two. To stage one i- if things are, are starting to move more quickly in a wrong direction. They're already in a wrong direction and that's why we recommended stage, um, two. And then I just would emphasize again that, uh, students and, and staff coming in on stage two would, uh, be doing so voluntarily. Thank you.
Um, I don't, I don't have that much else to add, but after listening to everyone and having done visual learning. Um, I would be comfortable with doing stage two.
Okay, thank you, Malani. Are there any other comments from any other board members?
Yeah, I, I would like to elaborate on the point. I, I, I appreciate if it's a split vote. I think it's indicative of, uh. A decision that's really hard. I don't, it'd almost be weird. I don't, it'd almost be weird to have a unanimous vote, I think, on something that has no clear answer. But I do um, wanna point out, because I'm sensitive to the fact that I do not believe stage two is inequitable to our high-risk students. Um, in fact, it feels kind of paternalistic to take the choice away from them. And to tell them what is best for those communities, especially when I feel like they've been missing from the conversation. And so what I would say, I remember reading the Seaville Weekly, where one of the leaders of our local, the preschool coalition uh, suggested that what we need to do, instead of sending them to school, is perhaps we could, they could get teachers and have a community effort to educate those children and go out to their neighborhoods. And my question is, why can't we also help those students? Why can't we have that same level of flexibility where we allow them, where we can think of ways? Judy, you said, how do we serve them? And that's, that's the question, like, why can't we be involved in that? And so for stage two, I would never want to imply that I am willing to take, put them at risk. What I am willing to say is um, I think it can be done safely because there's absolutely a difference between sending all of our students back and sending only a very small number of our highest needs students back. And um, I wanna have the flexibility to offer them the services that they need.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Um, any other comments from the board? The only thing that I have to add into what's already been said is that probably somewhere deep down, it should be rational, I guess, to me, to completely understand and to completely accept what Kate and Katrina and Jono and Dr. Haas are saying. I agree with all of you somewhere deep, deep down inside completely. But maybe the main issue that I have is that there are so many unknown factors, quite a few of them that Judy brought up, quite a few of them that Ellen brought up. And those unknown factors, to me, are so great until I'm not really ready to accept that we start out at stage um, two. I've received, and I think all of us received, um, and I hope we all read them, uh, two emails that really sort of moved me. And one of them wouldn't really be affecting what's going on with this. One was from a second grade teacher, and she was sort of asking, first she described what her normal classroom would be like. She'd have tables and other activities for all of the little kids to be around. They'd all be sharing materials. They'd all be hugging each other. She'd be hugging them. But then she raised the question about once this, recognizing everything that we don't know about COVID and recognizing all of the problems, she mentioned, what would she do to tell those little kids and to explain to them that they can't hug each other anymore? That she can't hug them, that if they have their shoe untied, she can't go over and tie their shoes. If they are cry- crying because something is going wrong, she can't hug them and sort of make things better. But then the one that, to me, the email that was so- sort of probably the most thought-provoking was one from somebody that said, what would you do if one teacher or one child died in the schools because of being exposed to COVID? And to me, that question was just so powerful. It just meant so much until I really couldn't give it an answer. I'm not really sure how, what I would do or how I'd react. I know that I'd be really deeply moved and just extremely sad that that happened. And I realized that everything that staff has done, that we really can't stop that from happening, that that might be just something that would happen anyway. But given all of those factors, I really can't support starting out at stage two. I'd rather that we start out at stage one, and that's not casting any dispersions on Dr. Haas or anybody else on the board or central staff. But that's just my feelings at this point in time. Are there any other discussion points? If not, are we ready for a vote? Okay, hearing nothing, silence gives consent. All right, uh, Mrs. Johnston, could you give us a roll call, please?
Does anyone need me to reread this before we vote?
Yeah, okay, right, that extremely extensive five-part, part, uh, motion. So yeah, if you want to read again.
No, I'm good to vote.
Okay, do we need to hear the motion again? Okay, I don't think so. All right, so Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mister? Mister Ober?
Mister Ober?
Pass.
Ms. Lee?
No.
Mr. Page?
No.
Mr. Ober?
Mister Ober, don't want to rush you.
Give me a second.
Okay. Again, we all recognize that this is an extremely important motion. Probably, like you said, uh, the most important one, or one of the most important ones we've had since we've been on the board.
We've been going for an hour and a half. Can we take a break and come back? Or do you?
Okay.
Dave?
We need to finish the vote before you take a break.
Okay. Dave, a few more minutes.
No.
No.
The motion failed.
Okay, the motion failed. All right, um, we would probably need an alternative motion um, on the board.
I move that we take a ten-minute break.
Okay.
Second.
Move second, we take a ten-minute break.
And then I will say my intention is to recall the motion.
Sorry, Dave, do you want to have additional discussion? Because I know we didn't ask Matt to weigh in.
I I
Or you just need time for yourself?
I just need, I did, I I
Okay, would recalling be better or would uh, not, would I move better?
I, I can recall the vote because I was on the winning side.
Yeah.
So I would just ask, can we take a ten-minute break?
Okay, hearing no objection, we'll take a ten-minute break. We will reconvene at three forty-eight. Okay. It is now three forty-eight. We are back in session. The motion that was on the floor by a vote of three to four failed. So we do have several options as to what our next step can be.
Mr. Chair, I move to reconsider.
Yeah, either a new motion or a uh, call, recall to uh, a vote to recall the motion.
I move to reconsider my vote.
Okay.
So the motion comes back up.
Okay, right. All right, so um, I guess we'd need to vote on bringing the motion back to the floor.
So it's a matter of privilege, Mr. Chair.
All right, so you're asking for the motion to be back on the floor?
Yes, it's a matter, it's a motion of privilege. I'm entitled to.
Okay. All right, so uh, Mrs. Johnson, could you um, perform the role again, the roll call? And we are voting on the original motion made by Mrs. Carlson and second by Mr. Alcarro. So a yes vote is to open on, at uh, stage two. No vote would be opening at some other stage. So Mrs. Johnson.
Ms. Lee?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
No.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
No.
So the motion now passes.
All right, so the motion passes by the votes of four to three.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I think before, if anybody else has any comments, I think that we as a board now will all, I think we all realize that we will unify and support that motion. We'll all be one hundred percent behind um, opening on September the eighth at stage two. We know that Dr. Haas is going to be able to um, monitor the situation and make any necessary changes. And I think we all recognize that because of that, we are in good hands. And more importantly, I think we recognize that we all in this together. This has been a tough vote for us. This has been a tough vote for us. And so this has been a very, very tough situation, a tough time.
Mr. Chair, can I just say that, for the record, the comments by Ms. Lee and yourself and Ms. Osborne were quite compelling.
Thank you. And like I said before, I completely understand and accept what the four people who were on the winning side were saying. So it was just a tough, tough, tough situation. All right, I think at the beginning of the presentation, there was, and for a moment, a flashback on the screen, what our next steps are gonna be. So could that be brought back up again? And who is gonna take charge of this part of the discussion?
I'm just gonna share briefly, and I apologize for pulling it up early to interrupt you, Mr. Page. I just wanna highlight a couple immediate next steps. I know our families are gonna have a lot of questions around virtual learning, and so we, on that return to school website, there's some details already on there, but those will be continued to be expanded. Ms. Gomez has spoken about that response plan. That will be on the website by early next week as well, a documenting of that. And then at your next board meeting, we have two items. First is an update to the 2021 calendar that is actually attached for information on this agenda item. So we're asking for action on the 13th. And then we are also in development of a mask policy, which will be before you on August 13th. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other comments or other business from board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
About the presentation, but I wanted to know, how is this compared to Charlottesville? Since they just came out with their plans front page of the news, and Matt, perhaps you could provide some more information?
I can. I'll, and it should be no secret, because the Charlottesville staff all are gonna understand this, but we meet weekly with Charlottesville Schools' leadership staff. And we met with them today. And while the newspaper report says that they're starting out all virtual, they are not starting out all virtual. They will be bringing in students in the same fashion that you had just voted to do in our state too. They will be bringing in students who have gaps that need to be made up. They will, and I think it's no secret too that my, my wife works for Charlottesville City Schools, and she's already volunteered to go in to work with the students who need extra time and support, because she prefers to go in to do that. And she's already been asked to do that. And so their, their, their schools will be open to these families, to these students that you just also voted to support. What was printed in the newspaper is misleading. I'm sure that's not the responsibility of the Charlottesville City Schools, because as we all know, when we give reports and pass on information, however it gets interpreted by the news outlets, that's, that's their own decision to do that.
Okay, thank you for those clarifying remarks, Dr. Haas.
Didn't realize I was not unmuted and I was typing at that same time, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
Mr. Page, I just would like to ask Dr. Haas and his team to provide us updates on the dashboard at our two August meetings.
Okay. All right, Dr. Haas has said been duly noted? Okay, I'm assuming so.
Yes, it has, yes. Okay.
Are there any other business, any other business that has to come before the board at this time?
We do not have business beyond the agenda. Again, I just wanna say, I, on behalf of my staff, regardless of the outcome today, we would, we would have been, and we are greatly appreciative of our school board for your leadership through a very, very difficult time. And I know each one of you has wrestled with this, because I've had conversations with each and every one of you. You have been incredibly diligent. Not a single board member has, has sat back and gone without questioning and asking very critical questions on behalf of the well-being of our students and employees and their families. And it's, you have, you have really done your diligence. So thank you very much for putting us through that. And we're, we are here to serve you, and we're, we're gonna make sure that the plans that we carry out are gonna, are gonna support learning for all and safety for all.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Haas. And again, we are all in this together, so we have to keep that in mind constantly. Any other business from any other board members?
I will tell the board what I was typing, since I did it so rudely, not on mute. I was telling, I was saying that our kids are resilient. And although this is not a great situation, I do think in the long run, they're gonna, they're gonna learn, things are gonna grow, and they're gonna do great. And I think that's always important to keep in mind.
And I would like to add that our attitudes all around are gonna matter. Kids' attitudes, parents' attitudes, the whole situation really stinks, but let's make the best of it.
Right. Yeah, life has given us some lemon, so we have to make some lemonade, right? Are there any other board member remarks or business? Not, the meeting is adjourned, and thank you all for your attendance and taking care of our business. Thank you all.
Hi, everybody.